Good afternoon. My name is Krishna Bansal and I'm the chairman of Indian Community Outreach. And on behalf of the Board of Directors of Indian Community Outreach, the advisors, the core team and over 3,500 members, I would like to welcome you, welcome all the candidates who have graciously given the time so that we can hear them and we can, I mean, our people, that they can understand what they're running for and decide. And as well as thank all the audience who are going to be listening via Zoom as well as Facebook and other medias. This is being published live on Facebook as well as ethnic media channels are taking this feed and they're going to be publicizing this as well. So a little bit about Indian Community Outreach. Indian Community Outreach is an organization that started in 2013. Let me just share the screen real quick. In 2013. Next page. I don't think so I can do this. So that's okay. It started in 2013 and this was the vision of at that time Mayor Peddell and Councilman Steve Chirico at that time, now he's our mayor Chirico, that we were looking to bring in the Indian American community in the mainstream so that they can work, integrate with the, with everyone and be part of the system. So with the mission of educate, integrate and empower, we have been working diligently for many, many years and have accomplished many things. Let me try to actually bring in the other screen if. Maybe just a quick thing. Okay. There are four major things that we, four major programs that we have been indulged in. Our flagship program has been India Day Parade and Celebration, a very, very successful program that we started, that we have conducted this for six years, a parade, grand parade and a program. This has not only brought Naperville on the international map for Indian Americans, but has brought in a lot of economic and other benefits for the, for our city. We have one of our other agenda items is connecting our businesses with the city and vice versa. And that has worked very well. And as a result, we see many businesses, Mall of India, Patel Brothers, these are the larger ones, but we have many smaller and many, many of them there. We give out scholarships every year. We have a conversation series of program which is, this is right here where we discuss many issues and related to the social issues, civic issues and many others and connecting with the civic process is one of the core things. And we have been conducting city council forum for Naperville for last many years. And this is next in the series here today.
Can go into full screen mode because it's showing it within PowerPoint. Just.
I know, but it's not. This is a list of our board of directors. I'm not going to read the names. These are people who have been working with us. In fact, one of the panelists here today was our candidates, Vasvi has been our board of members for many years. Advisory Council, our mayor has been part of advisory council and these people are from greater Chicago have been working for the good, helping us. Core member committee. And then as I said, we have over 3,500 members who work diligently, help us and we help them work, work together hand in hand. And as a success, I'll just say that tomorrow we are hosting another forum where we have like over 25 candidates from Indian American origin across from the Chicagoland areas, but they're, so that that's a good success that we are helping them get involved with the, with our mainstream system. With that, I will like to invite our mayor, Mayor Steve Chirico to come over and say a few words about getting involved, what the importance of these elections are. And we can go from there. So Mayor.
Thank you Krishna. Thank you ICO for hosting this event today. You know, educate, integrate and empower. And for education, really it begins with a big part of that is going to be about our government, right? And educating the community about how the government works and the Indian American community in particular. And integrate, when we were looking at the low voter turnout among the Indian American community, that was one of the big focuses that they had was to try to introduce them to the political system and make sure that they were participating in it. And then of course, once you are participating in the system and you're part of government, you are empowered. And so that was the whole idea behind this organization and they really made some great steps towards that. I want to say thank you to all of the candidates who have been willing to go through this process, win, lose or draw. I think you're all going to agree that this is a really rewarding process. And it's something that it's hard. It's frustrating. It's a lot of work, but you learn a tremendous amount and you have a ton of political, a ton of personal growth out of it. And so, you know, however it all ends up, I think you're all going to be better for it. And I know that, that I always was. I always felt better for it as well. We're in a really weird time right now with our political system across the country, certainly even at local level. And people are getting involved for lots of different reasons. And sometimes there are very, very healthy reasons and sometimes it's, it's not such great reasons. All I can say to all of you is, is that, that the best thing for our city is when people get involved to do what's best for our city. We keep parties out of it. It's a nonpartisan position. We keep, you know, hopefully we don't have single issue candidates out there who are really have a, an agenda. And we really just focus on all the items that really make Naperville such a great city to, to live. And, and that's what this forum is about. So that we can identify who those people are that really are, have a really well-balanced view of this community who have been active in the community, engaged and who have really wanted at this point step up to take a larger role. So I look forward to hearing some of the debate. Again, thank you to ICO organization, the board of directors. Krishna, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your kind words. And you're absolutely right that we do need a part of government. I mean, we always focus on the national government and the state government, but the government that plays, plays most role in our life is the local government, especially the city council and the city. So this is very important. Thank you for stepping up, every one of you. This is a, this is a big role. This is, this is a very much needed role. We appreciate your coming up and we'd like to hear and our audience will like to hear from you and so that they can come up and, and vote and respective whoever wins or lose, I mean, you all are heroes here. We want, just by stepping up, I know from my personal experience how important this is. So thank you. And at this point, without taking much time, because we have a long forum here, I'll like to introduce my moderators of, for this forum, Viral Shah. Viral, can you raise your hand? Viral Shah here. And then Bhadresh Patel. Bhadresh, can you raise your hand? There are more. They will be taking the forum to the next, to the next stages. They will talk about the rules of engagements and everything. And we will take it from there.
All right. Thank you Krishna. Welcome to the 2021 ICO City Council Candidates Forum. My name is Viral Shah and as a board member and on behalf of Indian Community Outreach and along with my colleague Bhadresh Patel, I welcome the audience and the candidates to this afternoon's forum. For the next two hours, our goal is to understand our candidates who are vying to represent us in the upcoming elections in April. We have 11 candidates who are on the ballot and I will start off by calling on each one of the candidates who will spend two minutes to introduce themselves. This will be followed by two questions that have been given to them ahead of time and they will have a minute and a half to answer these questions. Following these two questions, we will then turn to the questions that have been provided by the attendees. And we have a lot of them, but we're going to have our ICO pre-screeners review the questions, make sure that we consolidate them and they fit the guidelines. So that way, you know, you're not repeating questions and you as candidates would have about a minute to answer each question. When there are 15 seconds left to wrap up your answer or your introduction, the timer on the screen will change colors. The timer right now shows it's just our current slide, but that will change colors and there'll be a chime that will play. And then when the timer is up, it will flash red and we'll let you finish your sentence, but you, you know, we would like you to meet the timeline and not go past it. The sequence in which the candidates will introduce themselves as well as answer the questions is random. So it will not always be candidate one goes first and candidate 11 goes last. We're going to mix it up. We've done that successfully in the last three forums that we've had for the city council. So that way everybody gets an opportunity to go first as well as be last and everything in between for that matter. At this time, if, are there any questions on the format from any of the panelists? Okay, then let us begin. So the first part for today is going to be the introduction. And we are going to start off with Paul Leong as the, as the first candidate.
Hi, my name is Paul Leong and I am running for Naperville City Council. First, I would like to thank India Community Outreach for allowing me to join in this forum. I would also like to thank all of my opponents for stepping up to provide service and leadership. Whether I agree with you or not, I respect your effort and your passion. For the last four years, I have been serving Naperville School District 203. I have been learning how to serve, how to govern and how to lead. During that time, I have lowered property taxes by more than $30 million. Still maintained a high level of academic achievement. District 203 has the most exemplary schools of any district in the state. All of those tax cuts benefited residents as well as businesses. When I stepped down, I will be leaving a healthy surplus for the students of the future. My degrees are in finance and economics. I've worked as a financial analyst and an IT professional for decades. I believe that good government needs to be efficient, effective and provide financially responsible decision-making and leadership. I've been serving you for the last four years. Please allow me to continue to serve you by electing me, Paul Leong, to the office of Naperville City Council. Vote for Paul Leong. I am number one on the ballot. You can read more about me on my website, www.votelyong.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Let me stop. Next up is John Crumman.
I guess you're going on the order of the ballot. So I'm number two. Hello, everyone. My name is John Crumman and again, thank you to the ICO group for putting on this forum. I'm a master's degree in mechanical engineer with an MBA. I'm an adjunct professor of economics up at North Central College. And I'm a two-term incumbent seeking my third and final term. I'm also the liaison and for a while there was the chairman of the Public Utility Advisory Board. So if it's an electric and water, I have some knowledge. I'm also the council liaison to the Financial Advisory Board. And I championed the creation of the Sustainability Task Force. For the fifth time in a, fifth time out of five times, I'm endorsed by the Daily Herald. Not sure if that's a record or not, but I'd like to look that up. I first ran in 2011 and lost, 2013 and lost, but both times are endorsed by the Daily Herald. Again, I ran in 15, 17 and now again here in 2021. And for the third, fourth time in a row, I'm endorsed by the firefighters. So I guess I've been pretty consistent. A little bit more about me professionally, I've also worked for Tata Consulting and I worked with a, on a globe where we converted a diner truck or a freightliner truck from diesel engine, diesel gas over to, and I worked with all kinds of engineers from India in that process. And I've had many of them stay in my house when they were caught between apartments and condos and rents. They stayed in my house. And so I've gotten to know a lot about the Indian culture that way. I'm also a Six Sigma Black Belt and I'm also a PMP. And my, my issues are short and sweet. It's about city finances. It's about a healthy Naperville. How do we come out of COVID? That's about public safety. Again, endorsed by the firefighters. So I'm going to end there, even though I got a few more seconds left, but I just wanted to say thank you. And I'm excited about the forum. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Allison Longenbaum.
Thank you so much for your hospitality on this beautiful afternoon. I am Allison Longenbaum and I'm asking for your vote to elect me to Naperville City Council. I am not from Naperville, but I was born in the Chicagoland area in Homewood. And I moved around a lot growing up. I went to school in Puerto Rico, New Orleans and Connecticut. And after graduating with a math degree from Penn State, I moved to Chicago and found a job with JP Morgan. My husband and I moved to Naperville 16 years ago to raise our family. We have three daughters at Naperville North High School. I've been with JP Morgan for 29 years, currently as a vice president in clearing operations. At JP Morgan, I've had the privilege of working with teams from around the world. I started going to city council meetings because of the Fifth Avenue train station development in my neighborhood. And I've been to at least 60 meetings since 2017. Along the way, I've also tied council to one of my other passions, running. And I visit places on my daily run as a way to research what's on the agenda. As far as what I'll do when I'm elected, I think Naperville should be ready to lead the way forward in a post-COVID world. First, we need to help our local businesses and struggling families survive COVID. At the last council meeting, it was announced that Naperville is getting $13 million in American rescue funding. And that'll go a long way to help. It can help small landlords, additional utility assistant grants, paying down debt and applying it towards infrastructure. Secondly, I support reasonable development. I don't want other neighborhoods to repeat my experience with the Fifth Avenue process. So we'll advocate for transparent process that always includes all stakeholders. And Naperville needs more affordable housing. Naperville should be a place where people can afford to live from childhood through to retirement. And putting in that hard work is the right thing to do if we want Naperville to be an inclusive, multi-generational and diverse city. Finally, council needs to get back to basics. I'm committed to building up our community by focusing on nonpartisan shared experiences and needs. Leave pickup and traffic congestion are local issues that can bring us together. So I am running for you and I would love your help to help me.
All right. Next is Jim Hazelhorse.
Thank you for inviting me to talk to you today. My name is Jim Hazelhorse. I'm the fourth choice on your ballot. I am a retired Navy senior chief with over 30 years of government management leadership experience. For the last 25 years, I've managed a business here in Naperville as long, along with volunteering with various nonprofit organizations in our community such as the J.C.'s Rotary Exchange Club, West Bourbon Irish, so forth. For 20 years, I've been engaging city council, city government on various levels, city council meetings, board meetings, city staff, so forth. So I am familiar with our local government. All of this has given me a great deal of exposure to our community, the diversity of our community, then the neighbor, in our neighborhoods that I can use in my decision-making in city council. Also, I have a bachelor's degree from the University of Colorado with physics and major in physics and math. I have a master's in business administration from the University of Illinois or Man and Campaign. And I feel that the two major things, and a lot of this, I think as candidates agree, is recovery for our economy and of course, the affordable housing issue. So I think there's a lot we can do on this. As a matter of fact, the affordable housing issue was something I raised back when I was running for mayor six years ago. So it's been an issue in our community for a long time. And I think it's something we definitely need to address. If you want to learn more about me, my positions on the various issues our community is facing, you can go to my website, www.napervillecandidate.com. There's a great deal of information on there about me, my qualifications and my position on several positions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Next up is Jennifer Brizan Taylor.
Well, thank you guys for having me here today. My name is Jennifer Brizan Taylor, running for Naperville City Council. Remember to pick six on April 6. I'm running so that I could promote small businesses, protect public safety and pursue reasonable development. This matters to you all because this impacts your everyday life. As for me, I grew up here in Naperville over at 95th and Naperville Plainfield Road. When we moved here, 95th, 95th Street was a two lane gravel road. I literally watched the whole area transform around me. I'm first graduating class of Niqua and my parents still live in the house that I grew up in. Now, I spent my career in public service and as a Cook County prosecutor, every day I had to make tough decisions in emotionally charged situations. I did this by analyzing facts, doing research and speaking to people, a skillset that's necessary today. I've been heavily involved with community the last few years. And so I'm on top of the issues that we're facing, not just the hot topic ones. Let's turn to those issues. Promoting small businesses. This isn't a buzzword for me. My parents lost their business when I was a kid growing up here. So I understand the ripple effect on a family and a community every time we lose a business. And that's why I have a plan. A plan that includes a private-public partnership with local area business, area banks to help these struggling businesses. Now protecting public safety, this is paramount to me. This is why both the Fraternal Order of Police and the Firemen's Union has endorsed me for city council. We have a benchmark police department here, but we're also seeing crimes that we haven't seen before. If elected, I will work with our police department to make sure they have the personnel, the tools and the training that they need to help combat the rise of certain crimes we're seeing in mental health cases and to make sure that everyone feels safe in all police encounters. Finally, pursuing reasonable development. We need an updated and comprehensive master plan to reduce a lot of this conflict we're seeing over development. We need to encourage sustainable building methods and incentivize developers to work with us to help solve our attainable housing needs. To accomplish these goals though, I need your help. I need you to pick six. Jennifer Brizan Taylor for Naperville City Council and check out my website, tailorfornaperville.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next up is Benny White.
Well, hi, I'm Councilman Dr. Benny White and I'm running for reelection for the Naperville City Council and I'm running to continue moving Naperville forward together. Thanks to the ICO for hosting today's forum. Just a little bit about me, I've been married to my high school sweetheart, Kim, for 33 years and we have two adult children, both are products of the 204 school system. Personally for me, I graduated from West Point, which really is considered the premier leadership institution in the world. And I've served 22 years in, in the United States Army. Since retiring though, I've continued on with my leadership journey and I've received my doctorate in values-driven leadership from Benedictine University in 2014. During my time on council, I've been a stalwart supporter of supporting our CDC guidelines. I've also worked extremely hard as far as maintaining our steady tax base. And I've been the leader on council as far as discussing diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives. My platform, if I'm so fortunate to be elected for next time, will be continue on with community engagement. I'm, want to ensure that we maintain great financial stability. We've done a great job there and we need to continue it. I want to get, support our public safety because I know they need all the resources they need in order to do their job. And we need to work on our attainable housing as well as smart development. Leaders and organizations in our community have recognized my leadership potential as I've received endorsements from Congresswoman Lauren Underwood, Congressman Sean Caston, Mayor Chirico, the Daily Herald, the Naperville Professional Firefighters and the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce. So you don't have to count all on the ballot where, where I am because I'm the last one on the ballot. And if you want to learn, please visit it at BennyWhite.org to learn a little bit about me. Thank you and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next up is Lucy Chinev.
Thank you. And thank you for having me. I now have a deep-seated fear of timers, but this is the last speech. So here we go. Thank you so much for having me. I, you know, halfway through this campaign, I started changing my, my two-minute speech because people were getting stuck on one thing. So I lead with it now. I used to be a Secret Service agent. I served under George W. Bush and that's one thing people remember, but there's a lot more to me than that. I'm a licensed professional civil engineer with over 12 years of experience in both the public and the private sector. I am a public servant. I have worked for the government for more than eight years as both an engineer and a Secret Service agent. I am running because I want, I care deeply about Naperville. It is my home. And I want my elected officials to make responsible decisions for people like me. I am a married mother of three. I have three, my kids are at Naperville Central, Madison Junior High and Meadowlands Elementary School. I am a former stay-at-home mom and a former single mom. So I know what it's like to struggle to find that balance. I want to help build a sustainable Naperville and focus on the triple bottom line. And that is people, planet and prosperity. Our people have a right to feel safe, included and accepted. Our planet needs some help, flood control, environmental mitigation, that is my wheelhouse. I want Naperville to lower their energy consumption, preserve wildlife and reduce flood floods. Ironically, the only way to preserve our way of life is to change our way of life. So let's build green infrastructure and smart city initiatives into city planning. Last, I'll just, after this timer thing, everybody just remember, I love Lucy and I hope you'll learn more about me. Thank you.
Guys available to have a quick discussion.
Was that, was that for us, by any chance? I think somebody was talking. Anyway, next up is Vince Ari.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting me to this forum. And just a little bit about myself. I'm a lifelong resident of Naperville. I grew up in Naperville, went to public schools in Naperville, graduated from Naperville Community High School in 1962, attended, I graduated from North Central College in 1968, spent two years in the army, one year in Vietnam. I was involved in business throughout my life and started my own small business, Ori Realty. I have much experience in business. I did not have much experience in politics. And that's why I'm running. I think the main reason for Naperville being the city it is, is because of education. And running for it, running for council would be part of my education as well as my duty to serve. I attended, I have attended many classes at College of DuPage and continued education at North Central. I love to spend a lot of time in public libraries and I have served in many of the community groups throughout the city over the last few years. So I'm Vince Ari and I'm running for city council to help continue the educational process in Naperville. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince. Next up is Vasavi Chakka.
You saved the best for the last, huh?
We've got two more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm Vasavi Chakka. I'm running for Naperville City Council because I love Naperville and I deeply care about the community. And I vested most of my state life in Naperville, serving the community for the betterment of it. I'm a mother, a wife and a small business owner and a community advocate. I bring my fashion, passion for public service, teamwork, leadership skills and tenacity to build strong alliances to benefit Naperville community. I have a BS in undergrad and masters in literature and also I'm highly specialized in IT management and leadership programs. I have done diploma in leadership from across the nation from several institutions. I, we moved here to provide my children the best possible opportunities for them to thrive. They both graduated from Niqua Valley High School. And during that time, I met with Mayor Peddell, who was called Mayor of America. So he inspired me to get into, get into community service. And I started my community service with PTA and then I served as a PTSA president for Niqua Valley High School. Then I served on many, many nonprofit and nonprofit organizations which are close to my heart. I'm, I have three priorities. One is protect our community, promote economic growth and invest in our infrastructure. I am number three on the ballot, Vasavi Chakka. Vote for me.
Sorry, I was muted. Thanks Vasvi. Next up is Ian Holtower.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ian Holtower. I'm running for Naperville City Council. I believe leadership is about giving people something to believe in that's bigger than themselves. And I want people to believe in Naperville. I was born and raised here. I'm the son of two immigrants from different parts of the world. My dad came here from Germany. My mom came here from Japan. Even though we were what you might call a conspicuous family, we always felt like this was a welcoming community moving in the right direction. After I graduated high school from Naperville North, the 9/11 attacks happened and I knew I wanted to serve. So I joined the Air Force where I served as a uniformed attorney for four and a half years as a prosecutor and the rest of my time as a defense counsel. After my time in the military, it wasn't a hard decision for my wife Julie and I to move back to Naperville. We have four kids. This is the best place in America to raise a family and my parents still live here. I, my top three guiding star priorities if elected to council will be number one, restoring respect in our community. There's been an unfortunate erosion in our political discourse nationally and regionally and even locally over the last, you know, five to 10 years. I'll hold monthly town hall conversations and always listen to the facts before making a decision. Second, I will protect our economy. One thing we've done a good job in our city over the last five years of is watching our debt. The mayor deserves a lot of credit for that. One thing in addition to paying attention to debt load is I want to make sure we pay attention to our use taxes and not seeing upward. our use taxes and not seeing upward creep of those because they have a disproportionate impact on small businesses and working class families. I want to keep this the best place in America to raise a family, which starts with having strong values like valuing our environment and also valuing keeping this an attractive place for businesses to come in the future. I look forward to your questions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Last but not least, Mark Oden.
Well, that's yet to be proven, but thank you very much. I'd like to say thank you very much to ICO. Going into this, they, my knowledge of the Indian community was not very strong in Naperville, so this gave me a chance to research it. I mean, I have been impressed by some of the leaders like Krishna and of course Vasri that I've run across. And looking at it, I see there's two elements that are typical of the Indian community that I can relate to very closely. Number one, the strong family unit. And number two, also the entrepreneurial spirit, the business spirit of the Indian community. Many, many family-owned businesses. So this closely mirrors up with partly my experience. My wife and I have lived in Naperville since nineteen eighty. We raised our four children here. They all went to Naperville schools. They're all graduates of Naperville North. And I'm proud to say they all went on and got college degrees. It's a fantastic thing. You know, myself, I'm an electrical engineer at University of Notre Dame. My area of study is computers and control systems and I spent most of my time in heavy industry working on energy efficiency. Okay. And but for the last five years, I've had the first taste of actually serving Naperville public, working in the Historic Preservation Commission. And during this time, I've come to understand something very fundamental. And that is that commissions advise, but decisions are made by elected officials and this is the way it should be. I want to be part of those, making those decisions. And the ones I see we need to work on are balanced development, attaining our affordable housing goal, continuing the work of Councilman Benny White in terms of diversity and extending the work that Councilman Sullivan has done in terms of ethics and transparency. That thing is scary. I've got to say, with just 10 seconds left, 10 is a magic number. I'm number 10 on the ballot. I look forward to having opportunity to earn your vote today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I apologize. I didn't realize that the bells and things from this timer were going to be that loud. But at least all of us paid attention to that. That was fantastic and everybody cut off on time, so that worked out. With that, I'll hand it over to Badresh to continue with the next set of questions.
Viril, thank you. And again, I want to thank the candidates for joining us this afternoon. It's a lovely day outside and it's going to be a lovely afternoon as we get to know a little bit better about what you guys stand for and what your positions are. So let's just get to it. So as, as we kind of move into it, Naperville has been rated amongst the best cities to live in. We're facing multiple challenges of two which we're concerned about. One, taking care of our seniors who have lived here for most part of their life. And B, finding ways to attract and retain some of the younger population while making them part of the fabric that makes the city so great. The current average age of our population of Naperville continues to go up. While we've seen great initiatives that the city has taken in regards to seniors, our younger generations are asking, what initiatives or investments are you willing to propose that will help make the city attractive for our younger population? This would include modernization of the city itself and at the same time being fiscally responsible. So what I'd like to do is begin with Vincent Ori. You have ninety seconds, please.
Thank you. As being a senior citizen, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about what our role should be going forward. Our role should be in, in education, our own education as well as the education of our children and grandchildren and their children. I have visited and talked with many people in Naperville and I think that is the strongest suit that we have going for us as far as the community goes. I will continue to be involved. I was involved with COD after I got out of the service and continue to go to COD to further my education. And I think that is the greatest growth factor that we have, the COD, North Central College, our public libraries and institutions of learning. Our schools need to have seniors as well as other people volunteer to help in the schools and become a part of that whole educational process. So for me, it was an easy decision to run for city council because I, I did take it as a growth opportunity and as an educational process. And I have learned a lot from this and have been more committed to my own age group as well as the children and the other people in the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ori. We'll go to Mr. Erda, Mark Erda.
Well, thank you. I found this to be a very, very interesting question because it kind of addresses two areas that are part of what I see. First of all, I had the opportunity recently to speak to the Senior Task Force and during that meeting, I spoke to the idea that what we need to do is resolve ourselves, very much like President Kennedy did in the sixties, to attain the goal of affordable housing. So we can get this done before the end of this decade so that we control our destiny and it is not forced upon us by the state or the federal government. We need to make this effort happen. I think that's important, particularly relative to the, the Indian community because as we've mentioned, family is very important. And more importantly, intergenerational family is a big deal. And one of the things that we can do here is advance the adoption of what they call ADU. Okay, accessory dwelling units. You might know them as granny flats. You might know them as different things, but there are ways to go into a R1, R2 district and allow auxiliary housing. Now for the kids, one of the things Naperville's done is we've put fiber everywhere. We don't have it connected to everything and it's not doing everything and we don't have 5G up and running everywhere. But these things, providing this high-tech infrastructure is an important aspect because if you know anything about kids, they learn everything from the internet. They play on the internet. They deal with their friends on the internet. We need to keep them at the front. Naperville needs to continually lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. That was loud, Viril. Well, next
Over the wall for some reason.
All right. Well, next go to Lucy Chang Evans, please. Lucy?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Okay. Well, thank you. I would like the, for, in speaking to the younger generation, I would like the revised Fifth Avenue Development Plan to include space for an incubator for brick and mortar businesses. This space could host pop-up style aspiring businesses, local aspiring entrepreneurs in a high-traffic area and allow them to build customers. This is something that has been done in Portland, Oregon, which is my hometown. And I think we could bring that here. So if successful, these businesses could then relocate to another part of Naperville and bring revenue to those areas as well. The younger generation enjoys experiences and trying new things. This incubator would draw more people to existing businesses downtown and give customers the variety they seek. In keeping with the theme of millennials and experiences, I would love to see more food festivals in Naperville. Nothing fosters diversity, equity and inclusion quite like food and I'm a big fan of food. Let's support Sika to promote cultural understanding through shared experiences with our friends and neighbors and also give our local restaurants a boost at the same time. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucy. We'll next go to Ian Holthaus.
Sure. You know, I think it's interesting that this question focused on seniors first and then on younger generation as though they are two sort of separate categories. In talking to voters, I actually hear a lot of the same kinds of requests for what people would like to see in the city from those two groups. One is walkability, you know, having an area where you can go that's vibrant, that's pleasant, especially in the summer. That's something that people who are moving out from the city, you know, young tech professionals and people like that are used to and would like to see. The Fifth Avenue redevelopment is a great example of a place where I think we, you know, can really, really take a space that right now is just undeveloped parking lots and turn that into something amazing, more like some of those marquee stops you see on the Burlington Line when you ride the train out from the city. That also helps our seniors. I mean, many of them are transitioning away from driving and being able to have a community that's tighter knit, that's less sprawling, that's more walkable, I think is a wonderful thing. The second thing is diversity. You know, I, I think all of the sort of ethnic markets that have come up in our community, whether it's H Mart, whether it's Mall of India. First of all, selfishly for the community, they help greatly in keeping our sales tax base strong, keeping our residential property taxes down, but they also keep our community vibrant, the kind of place people want to settle down, whether it's to retire or to come to it when they're young. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. We'll next go to Paul Young, please.
Paul, if you can unmute. Working on that mute. Okay, I agree in large part with what many others have said regarding seniors and affordable and attainable housing. So I'll focus on the second part of the question, finding ways to attract and retain some of our younger residents. I came to Naperville to work at Bell Labs when I was young and single. And I started my family here. My kids were born here and so on. So I have this fairly broad spectrum of experience in Naperville. I see on our webpage that we have pages and pages of accolades and the one I like the most recently is that we are now one of the, the best places from which to work from home. And I love that idea. I want to leverage that to bring younger, you know, workers to Naperville to telecommute. So again, Bell Labs isn't here anymore. If I can't bring another Bell Labs here, I want to bring the workers from all over the country here to enjoy our great schools, our safe environment, our great public libraries, our great parks and so on. You know, the entirety of our lifestyle and a great place to raise a family. I think that's very attractive. So two parts, again, bringing businesses here, good jobs and then bringing the workers of the future here. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And we'll next go to John Crumman.
Thank you. So most, some may know that my wife passed away 20 years ago from cancer and when I moved to Naperville, I raised my two boys. And now they are young professionals in their late twenties and I am in a four-bedroom house by myself. And I would love to downsize, but in order to downsize, I have to up budget and so I'm not willing to do that. And so, you know, that just goes to show you, if you have a portfolio of needs, you need a portfolio. And we just, we just need to keep working and understanding that. When it comes to, you know, the question was both the seniors and the young people. And I think their needs are different, but yet also similar. They need, they need to be able to afford to live here and Naperville is not cheap. So how can we do that? You know, I've been the leading voice on affordable housing. So as seniors get older, they can, they can move on and into less expensive houses. And then also as, as the young adults come on, how can they come into Naperville? Both my boys, you know, professional jobs still can't afford to live in Naperville. So, and I think the other issue is connectivity that was spoken about. I think that's, that's killer and I've talked on numerous issues about dark labor. And then lastly, it's sustainability and I've been the voice on sustainability. And I have a group of high school students who are helping me in this campaign simply because I've been a leading voice on sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's now turn to James Hasselhorse.
Thank you. Actually, this is an issue I raised when I was running for mayor six years ago. We do have an issue in this, in this city that we don't have an affordable economy for young people. An affordable economy, part of it is housing, but also part of it's transportation. And we have to understand that young people are very, have very different attitude towards these things than we do. We grew up with an ownership experience and young people today, according to an article I was just reading in the Wall Street Journal, surveys show that they are more experience-oriented. They don't really want to own things. They don't want to own a palace. They don't want to own a car. They want a nice apartment to rent. They want public transportation and other publicly available transportation they can use. So we need to focus on improving our public transportation. Our public transportation system pretty much shuts down at seven o'clock at night and it doesn't start up until seven o'clock in the morning. We need to fix that. And again, that's something I talked about six years ago. Also, walkability and bikeability, we're making progress in there, but we need to continue that because walkability and bikeability are two things they like. And I, every, and every day, one of the walkability things, I walk down on the Riverwalk every day and I walk by the JC Park, new park down there. And I see young people down there hooking up their networks, hooking up their computers through the wifi system out there. Those are the kind of things we need in our community. They're going to attract young people. So we need to also continue growing those kind of resources for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, James. We'll next turn to Vasavi Chakka. Vasavi?
Thank you, Badresh. Actually, I agree with many of the good points my colleagues has brought up here and I'm going to focus on two things. One, affordability and opportunity. So those are the two things the young people look into. So what is missing for them, especially my kids, my daughter has done chemical engineering and from UI and then she'd done MBA from McCombs UT Austin, but she doesn't have any opportunities to come back here and work here. And same thing with my son. So what we need to do is we need to create business and IT when incubators here to provide opportunities to the high school students, college graduates, subject matter experts, venture capitalists to bring this industry to Naperville, to make Naperville as a Silicon Valley of the Midwest. It's not a dream, it is a possibility. So I will work very hard to bring, make this possible just like ICO done, bringing the Patel Brothers and Mall of India businesses here and we can bring the IT to Naperville. So we need to encourage vocational training and also involve the students in schools to STEM-related fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Vasavi. We'll next turn to Alison Longenbo. Alison?
Thank you. Well, the city already has a number of draws for young families, including our great park district and award-winning schools. And the city's downtown events and shops and restaurants provide a vibrant social life and attractions for younger and older residents. So how do we make it even more attractive? We need to analyze where people are working, how they're getting there and traffic post-pandemic. The needs are going to look different than they do today. We'll need to upgrade our aging infrastructure and adaptive car usage decreases as projected. We all want to be outside more. The limitations on social gatherings has spurred renewed interest in the outdoors. Last summer, it was almost impossible to find a bike for sale. My daughters walked a marathon in a day because of a TikTok challenge. So we can attract more young people and make it more friendly for our seniors simply by expanding our bike and running paths and making the city more pedestrian-friendly. This also has the added benefit of having Naperville be a leader on reducing its carbon footprint. And if Naperville wants to continue to be one of the best places to live, we must continue to strive to be an inclusive and equitable community. The creation of the DE and I position with its focus on housing and revision of the city's mission statements are a good start. So the city must remain affordable and I, I support an inclusionary zoning to encourage young families to buy Naperville and to help seniors stay in their homes or to find new, smaller and more affordable ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. And then we'll turn to Benny White next. Dr. White?
Thank you for the question. The, you know, when it comes to our young people, I'll kind of stay high school level at this point. We tend to leave that up to our schools, but I think it's extremely important that we do what we can to get them involved into our city government because after all, at some point, the plan would be for them to be running this at some point. So I think that would be great for them. We look at our boards and commissions. We have youth that are on some of those boards and commissions that get to come in and participate in them. I think, I remember being in the office, I was talking to Mayor Cherico, we were looking at all these different pins on the map and he basically was talking about how he's trying to diversify, bringing in different people from other parts of the community. We need to take that same approach when it comes to our youth. And I think what Councilman Crumman said about sustainability task force would be a great one for our young folks to get involved with. When you look at our housing inventory as well, we, we talked about that for our seniors, but there's a trickle-down effect to that. If our seniors are having to stay in place and all of a sudden the housing that would normally be moved into by our younger families are no longer available. So this becomes a trickle-down effect when that, as far as that's concerned. Yeah, but micro apartments, I think are a great idea. I love the idea about incubators. I love the idea about incubators. One thing that the chamber does, which is a great one for our young folks is they have the Young Professionals Network where it gives them an opportunity, these young entrepreneurs that come in and talk and get some mentorship from some of our more seasoned veterans.
Thank you, Mr. White. And I'll next turn it back to Viral to move on to the next question.
Badris, I think you missed Jennifer.
Oh, my apologies. I did miss.
Yes.
My apologies.
Okay, well, our younger generation tends to appreciate experiences over physical items and spends money for these experiences. So we need to focus on attracting businesses, cater to providing experiences. A great example, this is the Performing Arts Academy Theater Art Gallery Recording Studio. Those recently approved at the latest city council meeting over at the Old Sam's Club. These are exactly the type of businesses we need to attract. We also need to look at some of our zoning restrictions, such as in downtown, where the first floor businesses are restricted to retail and restaurants. You know, as to Lucy's idea for festivals, exactly. In Naperville's 30 year plan, it has to turn Jackson into a festival, a festival street, which I support. It's something they were looking forward to move, moving into changing soon, but didn't because of COVID. So I would support, you know, turning Jackson Avenue into a festival street. And then moreover, we need to add more mixed use housing, which is more attractive to younger generation. They want a walkable urban experience, but they probably can't afford to live downtown, if we're going to be realistic. So this provides a great option for them and for us to revitalize some of our old strip malls and push for a more sustainable lifestyle. The housing is denser and they're okay with, and it's more affordable. We also within this, make sure that we do expand our fiber optic to make it more easily connectable to this younger generation. And this is something that's been very successful in both the Atlanta metro and the Washington DC metro areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Viral, now back to you.
Thanks, Badris. So this next one, you know, the question has been given to all of you ahead of time. It is, the initial part is wordy, so please bear with me. Naperville over the past 20 years has become more and more diverse. Current diversity is at about 25% with Indian Americans numbered over 12% of the population. And they are one of the largest minorities. Most of the population is highly educated and are successful business owners and contribute immensely towards the economy of Naperville. The young students of Indian descent that live in the city of Naperville are very driven to be successful. Since 2013, ICO has contributed to educate, integrate and empower all citizens via education, cultural exchanges and promoting economic interests of Naperville. Is, so here's a question. Is cultural, cultural diversity important to you? And if elected to city council, what would you do to further engage such a diverse population for the betterment of the city? We will start with Councilman Crumman.
Let me try that again. I had a sixth sense feeling you were going to start with me. So for diversity and inclusion, I served on the Board of Directors for the Shilin Community, which is a Chinese community center. I've also been on National Inclusions for American Indivisible, Public Leaders for Inclusion. And that was about talking about, you know, what can I do as a local leader with other local leaders throughout the country and exchange ideas? And as I mentioned before, I was a global program manager for Tata. And I've opened my house many times to many young Indian engineers to come over here who were here for two months or even six weeks and they've stayed in my house. And so you get to learn about multiple cultures there. Everything is, is, you know, how, how do you get, get to make everyone feel comfortable in a city that, that is the size? It's never a tiny little town. It's a city of 155,000. And I never forget that I have 155,000 bosses. And so how do you do that and how do you keep moving forward? And it's, it's listening and it's talking and it's just understanding each other. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to Jim Hasselhoss.
Thank you. Yes, diversity is important to me. It should be important to anybody that cares about seeing our, our, our community grow and our economy grow. It's no secret that the economies that do best and thrive best are the ones that do have diversity in them. So it's obviously a very important part that we need to make sure and continue to grow in our community. And I think the outreach program has been very, very good at that. I mean, look at how much it's accomplished in just seven years. It's, it's really very impressive. I think we need to expand that outreach program to more than just our Indian and Chinese community. As I think we need to include other minority groups within ethnic groups in our community in the outreach program. And by doing that, as you and the Indian community know, it makes you feel much more involved, much more engaged. It gives you a feeling like you, you're welcome in the city. And these kinds of programs are very important to getting that diversity in our, in our community and getting the people feeling like they could come here and be part of our community and contribute to our community and be welcome here. So the outreach program to me is a big one. I think we need to expand it and we need to include other groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer.
Thank you. Of course, cultural diversity is important. This is why Naperville is such an attractive place to live. Our growing diverse population only brings new ideas and viewpoints in Naperville, but also new businesses. Many of our long vacant big box retail spots have been filled with vibrant ethnic businesses. H Mart, Patel Brothers, Mall of India. They not only contribute to our tax base, but exposes our entire community to new products and culture that they might not otherwise. So I want to expand the number of minority owned businesses and would work with our many local groups and private public partnership organizations to do so. We recently hired a diversity inclusion director and I hope that this is one of the many areas that she will focus on. We also have to remember that diversity goes beyond race and includes, among other groups, socioeconomic status. People do not understand that 5% of Naperville lives at or below the poverty line. I understand this because I was one of those kids who grew up here below the poverty line. And I always felt ashamed as though I had to hide our poverty. Housing is one way to help the situation, but it still does not solve how to make this group feel included. To be poor in the land of opportunity is often to be seen as a personal failure. And sadly, even today, people have mocked me when I've discussed the difficulties experienced as a child. I don't pretend to know all the answers and how to make everyone feel included. But what I do know is that we have hired a great diversity inclusion director that I will open up with, with ears and listen to how, what we can do to improve everyone's feeling included in Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy.
Oh shoot, I guess I was unmuted the whole time. Sorry. Okay, so yes, cultural diversity is very important to me. As a Chinese American, I'm so pleased to see so many Asians running for office. I realize that if I'm elected, I will represent the Asian population and members of the community will look to me for leadership. I would further engage with the diverse population with my willingness to engage and listen. This latest attack on Asians in Atlanta prompted me to respond on my Facebook page, calling for more people to stand up for their friends in times like these. So if, if anybody wants to go to my web, my Facebook page, see what I have to say about it. It's, it's really an impassioned plea for everyone to just stand up for their friends. I hope to foster positive dialogue to bridge our culture gaps through cultural events, city sponsored diversity and equity and inclusion initiatives and sharing my own experiences as a minority. Everyone has a story. Let's tell more of our stories and listen to more stories. We all belong here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dr. White.
Thanks for the question. I've been a leading voice on council when it comes to this particular issue. I led the effort in getting our city's mission statement updated to a point where it now includes the words, "an inclusive community that values diversity." So I take this very serious. And those words are very important because it, it leads to us be, being able to create policy. As an example, we have a human rights in Fair Housing Commission now because it's part of our mission statement. Jennifer mentioned about our DE and I manager. Those types of things in our mission statement leads to us being able to bring in a DE and I manager. So I'm really proud of that. But I've been doing this work as part of Naperville Neighbors United, an organization that I founded. This is what we talk about. We've been able to bring in diverse groups of people to learn about all of our differences with the understanding that we have a whole lot more in common than we have that's different. But folks from the Indian community, from the Chinese community, African American, LGBTQ have all talked, come up and talked about what their experience is like growing up in Naperville. So that allows us to build a little bit of empathy. We've had workshops on implicit bias. We all have these. I've also served on the Board of Education in 204 and we were able to hit these issues as well. And I would encourage us to let our Naperville Development Partnership continue to do some things to bring in organizations who are our committee. Thank you.
Next is Vintory.
Vintory, and I, since I've grown up in Naperville, I've seen diversity is pretty much in line or better than it is in other places. But it was not always that way. And I think it's on an individual basis that diversity has to be communicated and spread. Just one aspect, I am, I am not very technically savvy. So when I started running for office, I engaged my granddaughter to, to help me create the signs and create some of the materials for my office for running for council. And she did all the technical stuff. I gave her some ideas and we both learned from each other. And my son has a mixed race child. And he has gone out and taken this child that is somewhat disabled because of the fact that he is mixed race and growing up in Naperville still has those challenges. So I think each individual has to do his own part in creating a better place. That's all.
Thank you. Next up is Ian.
Sure. Well, currently I'm serving as chairman of the Board of the Naperville Area Chamber of Commerce. And I am very proud to say, our organization has really made an effort. And I'd say the Naperville business community as a whole has really made an effort to embrace diversity. If you look at our board, I think we are one of the most diverse boards in the city. We stood up a diversity, equity and inclusion committee in January of last year, led by Councilman White's wife. Cam is an excellent committee. We're just very committed to this cause. A lot of this question was geared toward the South Asian community, which I think is appropriate because it's the largest minority group in Naperville. It's actually probably one of the largest groups in Naperville, period, at about 10% of the city. One thing that the city has done a great job of over the last decade, and really the mayor deserves a lot of credit here, is including the South Asian community in boards and commissions throughout the city, really listening to the voices of the South Asian community and trying to get them involved. I think what I would like to see is to take it even a step further and go to sort of the recognition, recognition phase. So it's wonderful that we have involvement now. But you know, when we have new streets that are laid in our new subdivisions, what are the names on those streets? There's plenty of Indian American heroes that could be recognized there. Dr. Vivek Murthy, right? Former Surgeon General of the US, Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris. Just your local leaders, some of who are on this call, I think could be recognized in our community. Thank you.
Next is Alison.
I have three daughters at Naperville North and I am inspired by Naperville's youth for their thoughtfulness and commitment to solving today's problems. And two of their top issues are climate change and racial equity. So I think diversity is our greatest strength. I work with multicultural teams across the world and have traveled extensively across the globe for business and pleasure. And I want to increase representation on city task forces and commissions from underrepresented communities, including high school students. I became involved with local issues when I felt like my neighborhood's concerns were not being listened to when it came to the Fifth Avenue train station development. So I know the importance of listening to people and involving them in a transparent process. So I will actively engage with communities across the city to inform them of opportunities to participate and to encourage their involvement. I think part of the problem is that residents don't know how to get involved. So I found that when we have more perspectives are shared and valued, we create the best solution. So I embrace and plan to amplify our diversity. I also want to take a moment to denounce the rise of anti-Asian harassment, discrimination, violence and bullying. And I will work with the AAPI community, law enforcement and the new DEI manager and my city council colleagues to make the words, "hate has no home here," a reality for Naperville. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark.
I'm going to piggyback right off of where Alison just left, that hate has no place here in Naperville. America's greatness, a lot of times talked about American exceptionalism, is actually due to the simple fact that the fabric of America is woven with the threads of all the people of the world. We are a community of the world. This gives us the greatest strengths in the world. Naperville should be very proud of itself and what it's done. I mean, there is more to be done, but I have a little cheat sheet here. I just want to read a little bit of what Sika is doing. And I have to say, credit for this certainly goes to the mayor and to the existing council members. Okay, a couple of things going down the list. The Story of Ram, Tata's Christmas Nutcracker Polish Memory of My Childhood, Fourth of July Salute, Martin Luther King Day, Black History Month Celebration, Cinco de Mayo. Okay, coming on down a little bit further, Naperville Pride, Juneteenth, India Day Parade. Naperville, we are leading. We continue to do it. And this is a very great thing. So I'm very proud of our city. I'm proud of the work and I'd like to continue those things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vasvi.
Thank you. I come from a biggest democracy on face of the earth. And then I came to second biggest democracy to US. So both countries are very diverse. Like, you know, even though I come from India, India is a very diverse country with the different cultures, state to state and the language, you know, everyone has different language. But what brings us together is the unity in diversity. That is the value I carry in my heart very dearly. And I teach value based education, value based leadership based on that. So Naperville is the perfect example of what American spirit looks like. And it's the melting pot of the nation. I mean, if America is the melting pot, then this is the primary example of unity and diversity in Naperville. Naperville has been very good for different, different cultural festivals and, you know, bringing different cultures together. That's why I serve on ICO and I serve on Naperville Sister Cities, which we are going to bring Cancun as our new sister city. And we are going to celebrate September 15th as the, that week to celebrate Hispanic heritage. So I am all for unity and diversity and I promote every opportunity I get to.
All right. And lastly, we have Paul, but I don't know if he dropped. Because I don't see him anymore. Okay. All right, I'm going to scratch Paul for, for this one. And with that, we can move on to our third question for the afternoon. Now, Badris.
All right, we're, we're getting started. People are warming up and a lot of great, great responses. Thank you. This next round of questionings, we're going to, we're going to ask that you respond with a 60 second timer. So let's just jump right into it. There's been a lot of news about the increase of crime in the city of Naperville over the last couple of years. First, do you believe that this is the actual case? And second, what are your ideas about crime prevention, including the support of our police department? And we will start with Benny.
Thank you for the question. You know, it's, it's one of those things, when you look at the, look at crime, it depends on how you, how you define or look at it. Quite frankly, I can tell you that the crime in Naperville has actually gone down. If you look, especially violent crime, it's gone down over the last year. We have had an uptick in identity theft type of issues, which may, may make the overall part of that look like it's worse than it is. But that's really what the, the real issue is. Things that we can do though, we just, I, I just voted to pass a new budget that provides more social workers and more police officers to our police force. By, because a lot of, one thing we need to understand is that a lot of issues that we have as far as what the police respond to involves someone with a mental crisis. So we can take some of those resources, the workers deal with that. And the police officers can be more of a presence when it comes to traffic and being in areas where there tends to be a higher crime rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. We'll next move to Vinta.
Yes, I, I think Naperville has an excellent Yes, I, I think Naperville has an excellent record and the police department has done an excellent job. And the community has done an excellent job of participating in this. So I do not think that we're, we should put more resources into it, but we should direct those resources to helping the present system that is working well. So we should just encourage the present system to continue to work in our behalf. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Vincent. We'll next move to Ian.
Sure. I concur with Councilman White's comments with regard to crime statistics, so I won't repeat those. Just as a little bit of history, after the 2008 financial crisis, when Naperville was facing severe budget shortfalls, there was a decision to make significant cuts to the number of uniformed police officers. And there was some restructuring in the department after that, some good restructuring, which helped economize resources, have more civilian personnel, non-uniformed personnel, things like that. But in the most recent budget, there was a decision to hire four additional full-time police officers, uniformed sworn police officers, as well as a full-time social worker like Councilman White mentioned. I support that. I think that is the right call, given the current environment. And I think, given the unfortunate increase in mental health incidents, perhaps related to COVID, continuing to focus on that mental health mission may be the way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. We'll next move to Vasili.
Thank you. This is one of the most important item in my, you know, platform. Protect for our protection, protect our community and transparency in governance. So I got paternity of police endorsement for my stand on current policing. And I would, I would say there is a significant petty theft increase in, in the community. And people are very like, you know, very about it. So how we can make sure they are protected, protecting our community by promoting public safety measures and important reforms. Make de-escalating the situation and the crisis innovation intervention training successful and also hiring new staff and also the social workers to handle the social things and 911 calls, the type of stuff.
Thank you, Vasili. Well, next move to Allison.
Well, public safety is the number one priority of council. And we have a great police department. As Chief Marshall says, we're setting the bar, not reaching for it. And I applaud his leadership. I also support our budget, which increased funding, including funding for mental health support, social workers and crisis intervention training. And additional officers who can target things like the drag racers that happen down on the south, south side of Naperville. Addiction continues to hurt our families and communities. So if anything, adding more social workers might be appropriate. The additional investment would help our residents struggling with mental health and addiction and would also reduce the cost of law enforcement later. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Well, next go to Paul Leon. It doesn't look like Paul's returned. Okay. So let's, let's move to Mark Berta.
Thank you so much for the comments that have been going forward. I agree 100% with. I do agree that we have a world-class police department. I support completely the, the efforts that were done to increase the police budget. And I do think there are things along the lines that are coming in terms of the addition of police cameras. And I think maybe on the south side, even though people are loathe the talk of them, I'm not so sure that it wouldn't be a bad place for us to put some traffic cameras in to deal with some of these issues until we can put up enough patrolmen in place. I want to talk about a different subject though. I want to talk briefly about, you know, using the funds that come from the cannabis dispensaries. I know this community was very much opposed initially to this because concerns and rightly so. I would like to point out that we have seen increases in cannabis effects. And I'm very happy to say that the funds that are coming from these dispensaries are targeted towards that, segmenting our police force. And this is why I supported it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Let's next turn to Jim Hasselhorse.
Thank you. I agree with the comments by Councilman White regarding the crime rate in our city. I think most of it though is what we are seeing, the crime rates that are going up is driven by the pandemic. I think it's presented challenges for both our police department and our court system, our judicial system. That has been exploited by the criminals. So I think part of this is getting back to normal will help this. I believe that the council's decision to hire more social workers is an excellent idea. The sending them out to deal with the domestic issues is the proper way to handle those situations. And it frees up our law enforcement officers to deal with the more serious issues regarding public safety. So I do agree that that is something we need to continue to promote is giving that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll move to Lucy Evans, please.
Thank you. I feel like I'm cheating a little bit. I love going later because I get to piggyback on what other candidates have said. That's great. So I want to piggyback on Benny White and Ian. So thank you for all your comments. I would like to also just say that crime and safety are sometimes more about perception than they are about the real, the real picture. I've lived a lot of places and I can't tell you, I've never felt so safe than living in Naperville. We have an excellent police department. We have a wonderful police chief who is, it's, it's, it's a progressive police department. So I just think that the more we can support our police force, the better off we are. And Naperville is a great place. I think crime will be one better than most people. So I think we're pretty happy here.
Thank you, Lucy. Let's move to John.
Thank you. So to Benny's point, yes, major crime is actually down in Naperville. So that's, that's the good news. I strongly voted in favor of adding $3 million to the police budget for 2021. And you know, what did that include? I strongly championed as much crisis intervention training as we could get. And I'm proud to announce we have 25 officers going to crisis intervention training this year. This also will be good for, for body cameras as well. We did add five police personnel for, we're going to be police officers and one is going to be a social worker. So again, we are investing in the police department. And again, it's in short, a large percentage of the police calls are actually mental health-based, not criminal-based. And so adding that extra training for crisis intervention and the social worker, I think are key to addressing the concerns.
Okay. Let's next move to Jennifer.
I'm the only one running who has actual experience of the local criminal justice system. And protecting public safety is the number one role of government, as Allison said. And this is why both the Fraternal Order of Police and the Firemen's Union has endorsement for city council. So let's look at the stats here, actually. So deadly weapon cases are up 90%. That means 30 of them were in 2019, 57 in 2020. Armed robberies are up 15%. Vehicle burglaries are up 44%. Having your vehicle stolen is up 19%. Sexual assaults are up 13%. So when you look at actual individual crimes, we are seeing crimes here that we really haven't seen before. We've seen shootings on Bailey. I had a neighbor, the victim of a home invasion across the street here. So citizens are concerned, no matter the political affiliation, they are concerned here about safety. So we also have less officers here when I was a kid. We need to increase the number of police officers here in Naperville. I support increasing our budget for that. I also increase in social workers here to help our mental health cases that we're seeing here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I'll turn it over to Vera.
All right. The, the fourth question for the afternoon. We have seen Naperville is getting a higher, a higher number of residential projects compared to commercial development, including in parts of South Naperville, the Ogden Corridor and parts of Route 59. Commercial development helps ease financial stress from residents and on the school districts. What steps or initiatives would you help nurture to attract businesses and spur commercial development in Naperville? We will start this with Jim.
Well, yeah, definitely if we, with more and more residential, that does create a situation where you're putting more and more, it's becoming more and more difficult for the school districts and other government organizations to rely on property tax to fund their budget. Because properties, residential properties just don't have the value that commercial properties carry. I do think that our diversity programs that we talked about, the outreach programs are the type of things that can be done to attract more businesses to our community. And in, in doing so, create a demand for more commercial and industrial development. That's really the key to it. The developers will come here and build those properties up as that kind of resource if they see demand. Unfortunately, the only demand they're seeing is residential. So we need to focus on building up demand for those kinds of properties by bringing more of those kinds of businesses to our community. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Jennifer.
So, I mean, this is something that I keep bringing up when I'm talking to people about the same issue here that, you know, because of South Naperville, there is so much more residential over commercial, you know, the schools are underfunded compared to the District 203 side. And so Naperville has always been a very pro-development, pro-business environment. We have wonderful working relationships with both the chamber, with the Naperville Development Partnership, who have long-term plans here. So we need to continue to support a vision for Naperville and to develop here. And in South Naperville, we need to start seeing it as a place for commercial development. And for example, like some of these, the struggling strip malls, we have to be more creative. As I've stated, mixed use, there is some housing aspect to it, but there's also commercial part of it as well. And we have to just think beyond what we've always seen before and in offer more experience-based businesses as an option here. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Dr. White.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The important thing to understand is understanding what the, the tax base looks like. You want to have a nice balance between residential and commercial. And if you look at the two different parts of Naperville, if we were to split it between our school district 203 and 204, if you're in the 204 area, you're going to pay more on, on your taxes than you would, would be if you were in 203, primarily because there's more commercial in the 203 area. So we need to do what we can to attract businesses into that south, southern part of Naperville. The Naperville Development Partnership does an excellent job of going out and promoting Naperville to, to other companies to get them to come out in, in settle in Naperville. That provides jobs that helps out with our tax base. I just think it's an excellent thing for us to do. And once we get the businesses in here, especially if we're looking at minority businesses, we'd have an opportunity to have something in place to allow them to be successful once they arrive here in.
All right. Next up is Mark.
Thank you. I agree with much of the conversation here. I would like to maybe address two specific projects, I think, that really kind of drive this home. One is a project that has been put on hold for a while, which is the Polo Grounds. This was proposed to be a massive residential development, okay? Which the infrastructure of South Naperville has a hard time absorbing. This is an opportunity. This is a place where mixed use or commercial development should be preferred over the development of a more heavily dense residential development to help District 204. The same is true for a development which is on the northwest side of town called City Gate West. City Gate West actually was zoned as an industrial commercial area, is trying to be turned into a residential development. We should oppose this at all times, particularly because the burden this is placing on 204. I agree with all the comments about redevelopment. And I have to say, recently driving down Ogden, I was thrilled to see some of the new businesses that have come back into town. It was nice to see a Tesla dealership taking over a long overdue, you know, car dealership that's been abandoned. And next to it, a little bit, they tore down a building, a Caterpillar building. These are great things. But again, those don't help 204. We really need to focus on the south and helping District 204. They're 80% of their goal, even though the people are paying higher taxes. Thank you.
We had a malfunction with a timer there for a second. Next up is Ian.
Okay, just to piggyback on a comment Mark was making there. The state has a benchmark for how much each school district should be funded. District 203 is actually overfunded and District 204 is well underfunded. So there are, there's a gap of like $3,000, $4,000 per student for how well students are funded in 204 versus 203. And on top of that underfunding problem, you have higher taxes in 204. So I actually view this as almost an existential threat to our city. If you have this kind of disparity for this long, you could eventually see a downward spiral where you have two Napervilles. Geographically, I just want to point out, it's not really a north-south thing. 204 is also west Naperville, so northwest and west Naperville, big issue. One corridor I want to focus on, we have focused on in the chamber, is West Ogden Avenue, kind of, you know, the area around the old Menards. Patel Brothers, great example of the business that's helped rehab that. There's lots of other opportunities for the development. Thank you.
Next up is Allison.
Well, it's, it's about balance, like Benny said. And it's really, we need to bring all stakeholders to the table. And we need that balance of commercial to bring in tax revenues, but also be fair to the residents. And it also needs to be sustainable. We don't want growth to just grow unfettered. But it is a tough one because the District 203 area just has naturally more commercial space. And the city has tried to crack, attract more commercial business into 204 regions, but with limited success. However, you know, there are some new wins which are exciting, the Amazon Fresh store on South Route 59. I think this is really where we need to rely on our partners like the Naperville Development Partnership, who has done a fantastic job with bringing in new businesses. Like I'm super excited about the new Costco on, on the north side and the halo effect it will cause on the Ogden corridor. I hope similar things happen with the Amazon Fresh store. Would like to see the old Dominics where Ogden and New York happen. If that, that could create a halo effect on the 204 side as well. Thank you.
Next is Vanshiri.
I have been a part of Chamber of Naperville Chamber of Commerce for many years now. I joined as a small, joined Chamber as a member of Chamber as a small business owner. And I have been seeing their partnership with NDP and they have done significant improvements to the city. And one of the things that we need to promote business-friendly environment to attract new businesses and encourage startups. Then safeguard our businesses from unwanted taxes and regulations so they can thrive here in Naperville. And help local, small businesses to stay and grow in our community. They have, you know, with Patel Brothers and Malaf India and now with Amazon Fresh. The places which were closed that are reviving and I see good future for Naperville. If this continuing process, you know, be successful. Thank you.
All right. Next is something from.
Thank you. So balance is needed. And I live at 87 Modaf and my boys graduated from Nekua in 2010 and 2012. And so I consider myself a Southie, right? And, and I think that what we need to do is, I've noticed this imbalance for many years. And what we need to do is, you know, work on our connectivity. I spoke earlier about the dark fiber. We are fibered up. All our police stations and wires and fire stations are all wired. We need to take advantage of that. And by increasing our connectivity, we'll, we'll attract more IT-based companies and then that'll help, help correct the imbalance. Thank you.
All right. Next is Vince.
Yes, I think that we have grown very fast and we have done very well as a city. But I think we've lost some of our perspective. When I was growing up, small grocery stores and small restaurants were within walking distance of our homes. And now you cannot get to a restaurant or a grocery store without going miles to new areas. So I think the planning and development part of this should be reinstituting walkable facilities for our, all groups of people and just tone it down a little bit on size and density. Thank you.
All right. And last we have Lucy.
Thank you. I, I mentioned earlier my idea for an incubator. You know, downtown has so much traffic and I would like And I would like to see a lot of that traffic just move to South Naperville. There is so much that I want to buy and I would love to see these little mom and pop shops and restaurants in South Naperville because it's actually easier for me to drive there. But like I said, if we incubate these companies, get people hooked, pop up, you know, six months, you you make it or you break it and then move to different locations that need to be revitalized. I would just love to see that. And and like I said, it's worked before. It worked in Portland, Oregon. I would like us to study that a little bit more and possibly bring that to Naperville. And one thing I want to mention as a side note in my fifteen seconds is that Will County and DuPage County do not have the same stormwater ordinances. So those houses that you see in South Naperville, they are not built to the same ordinances as DuPage. So I would like to change that.
All right. Thank you so much. And I'll turn it over to Bubba. Badrash, I'm muted. Or we can't hear you.
There we go. How's that? Sorry about that. So let's go to next question number five. So our schools help make Naperville one of the best cities to live in in the country. There's an increasing issue with drugs in our communities, especially within the high schools. We understand their continuous efforts to fight this problem, but clearly it doesn't appear that there's enough. What are the ways and means for the city to control or deter this from becoming a larger epidemic? And let's start with Mark.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to that. That is a challenge. Okay? I think that throughout the nation, we've kind of seen that the war on drugs has been declared a failure. Okay. And and the reason for that is we haven't found a way to change to the man's side. Now, the only way to really change this is through education. Now, the one of the things, one of the uses that money comes from our cannabis dispensaries actually is specifically targeted both to law enforcement and for education on this issue. Okay? So I, from my perspective, education, but also we have to look at tolerance in this area. Now, what are we talking about? Should we tolerate heroin? Should we tolerate cocaine? No. But marijuana? I'm sorry, I have to say that I know that that this may be an unpopular statement, but it is, it's a fact of life. It has been for twenty years or two hundred.
Let's turn it to Jim.
Well, I have to agree with what Mark was saying. A big part of it is education. I remember when I was younger going to school, we had constant educational programs on not just the woes of drug use, but on cigarette as well, smoking. And during my generation, we actually saw a drop in that. So I think part of what's happened is we've kind of lost the importance of educating children on this. And that education needs to be reinforced by parents. But I also agree with Mark, there are certain things we need to look at, like attitudes have changed in our society and there are certain things we need to consider. Not enforcing, obviously, the cannabis issue is one that we need to revise and re-approach. We we need to allocate more resources away from cannabis to the more serious ones like the heroin and fentanyl issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll turn next to Vasvi.
This issue is a very close to my heart. I have been working with that part of 360 Youth Services CAP program, which is the Community Alliance for Prevention. Prevention is better than cure. So 360 Youth, they they actually done fantastic educational programs to prevent and educate schoolchildren, teachers and the community. So it takes a village to raise a child. So this CAP program does the same thing. It brings all the big community leaders together and promotes the prevention of drug abuse and other substance abuse. So we need to educate, education and awareness are the two important parts of handling these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Vasvi. Now let's turn next to Ian.
Yeah, this is an issue that's very personal to me as well. I was an attorney in the Air Force Criminal Justice System, starting in 2007. This was the era when nobody really was paying attention to opioids. People just thought, well, getting prescribed Percocet by your doctor was a normal thing. And I hate to say this, but we we got a generation of young service members addicted to opioids. And we, as a country, are still dealing with the consequences of that. I agree with the commentary about education here. It is so important. And thank goodness, at least we we understand the dangers of opioids now. I went to school in District 203 and one of my clearest memories is Officer Ernie Knight, a member of the Naperville Police Department, who used to come to our school and provide drug education. That's a program that's been cut due to budgetary constraints since then. I think it'd be a great thing to start reintroducing that kind of outreach in grade school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ian. Well, next turn to Jennifer.
Those who do not know, I led opt-out Naperville to keep recreational marijuana stores out of Naperville. So this is definitely an issue that's important to me. And one of the things here is we have to stop normalizing drug usage. We're seeing on highways now, the on eighty-eight billboards for these recreational marijuana stores. And that's something that we need to not have here in Naperville, that we don't expand here to Naperville. That we do have the stores, they are here. We also need to be aware that where the locations are going. Even though technically they can be allowed next to our preschools and daycares, we need to make sure they're not actually putting them there. We need to also, we were about education, not just the students, but the parents. Where the opioid crisis begin with? In the parent's cabin tree, not. So we have to make sure the parents are aware of their actions and how it influences their children. And we need to promote our local programs, such as the police department's Connect for Life and other drug treatment programs throughout Naperville here for people where they can go for help.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's turn next to Lucy.
Thank you. You know, I'll I'll address actually the normalization of marijuana. I I really don't think we need to see it any different than the normalization of liquor. You know, it's it's legal in Illinois. And as long as we educate people about the risks of marijuana, I think we're in good shape there. I think we need to look at mental health. Why these kids are taking drugs? My own personal experience, you know, I get emails from the school district. Nurture your child, take care of your child, make sure that they understand that they need to take care of themselves. And then on the same, you know, thread, I get SATs are coming up, standardized tests are coming up. Oh, my God, your kid didn't do their homework. So let's look at the holistic mental health in this community. Then, you know, educate our kids about drugs, but let's not scare anybody about drugs either. I think they're part of life and we just need to learn about them. Thanks.
Thank you, Lucy. Let's go to Councilman White.
Now, thanks for the question. The for me personally, I'm actually part of, I think Vasvi had mentioned it. 360 Youth Services have a organization called Community Alliance Prevention. And I sit on that board and the makeup of that board really involves leaders and stakeholders within the community. I kind of represent elected side of the House, being on the city council. And there's other individuals. We have individuals from the police department, from the fire department, from some of the mental health organizations, like Linden Oaks are all part of that. And we have young people from our local high schools, from each school district that come in and we talk about things as far as what we can do to to help out in that particular situation. One of the great things that we do is we we put PSAs out. You will see, you probably have seen some of those are pretty good. And people oftentimes are wondering, where do we go to dispose of our drugs? We give them that information as well. And a lot of folks don't know.
Thank you. And let's next step to John Crumman.
Thank you. So your question is pretty timely because I teach economics up at North Central College. And on Tuesday night, I gave a test. And one of those test questions was, how would you address the demand side of drug abuse? And so most of my students are twenty, twenty-one. And so I'm listening to them on how new ideas. So I was not only giving a test, but also getting some new ideas. I started talking about mental health last summer from the dais. And I think if COVID, if there's one good thing I hope comes out of COVID will be the understanding that everyone has some touch of 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 mental illness. And so I've spoken with Samar Care, Linden Oaks and and NAMI. And how can the city develop a grant program to help them, to help them address the problem of mental health and 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 drug. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's last turn to or next turn to Allison.
Well, we know that addiction is an issue that affects the city as a whole and affects a large number of our residents. And while the city doesn't have its own health department, we do have a lot of partners. So our park district and school board and the Alive Center. We know that it continues to hurt our families and community. So adding funding to the police department could help for additional programs and education. And whether you like it or not, we do have the big tax win from the cannabis dispensaries. And that could go towards funding these educational programs and policing and additional social workers and mental health programs. So we should take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And last, let's turn it to Vincent.
Yeah, I've personally been involved with drug addiction. And when I came back from Vietnam, I ended up becoming an alcoholic. And I learned that through many organizations, the veterans, COD, Linden Oaks and other people, that it's can be a fatal disease, but it can also be something that offers an opportunity for growth. And one of the biggest things that helped me was helping other people. And that's why I'm still involved with Linden Oaks. I'm still involved with COD and still involved with veterans group, trying to help them. So thank you very much. We just got to help each other in this situation as much as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Vince. And I'll turn it back to Vera.
Thank you, Badrash. And thank you, everybody, for going through these minute-long, you know, answers for for some of the questions that we have. The the next set of questions are, they're going to be rapid-fire questions, right? So there's there's not much that you have to say other than support or oppose. So there have been a lot of projects that have come up over the last few years where we've seen massive public opinion, right? It could be for, you know, to support it or oppose it. But essentially, there have been months of public debate or weeks of, you know, testimonies that are put in front of the council. So just like if you were in city council, when you're voting on one of these issues, you have to, you just have two options, right? You vote for it or you vote against it. You don't have the opportunity to say, hey, I supported fifty percent, or I supported seventy percent. That's the approach that I want to take for these next rapid-fire questions. All you would have to say is either you support it or oppose it. And it's just one word answer, right? So we can, there are six of them. Hopefully, we can get through them very quickly. So for this, first, it's going to be Ian. All right. So I'm not going to sound like, you know, how they do it on NPR. So I've never done it before. So the first question. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of these dispensaries in the city?
Support.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate here in Naperville?
Support.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue Project as is in its entirety?
Can you define as is?
The way it's been presented to planning and zoning.
I mean, I think the number of parking spaces would be inappropriate after the pandemic, so oppose.
Would you support the Naperville, the Napier Commons, the Nokia property project as is in its entirety?
The the latest version, yes.
So yes, it's support?
Yes.
If Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
From the last, from the last version, no, because I think you need to improve the street.
Would you support the twenty-eight, the two forty-eighth Avenue project, which is also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville? As is in its entirety?
Yes.
Okay. We are going to move next to Lucy. Same question.
So Naperville has I couldn't hear the, when you were saying them to Ian, Ian, I couldn't hear.
I'm going to repeat the question. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensaries?
Support.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate here in Naperville?
No, not oppose.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue Project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons Nokia project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
If Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
If the what project? Sorry.
The Polo Fields project.
Oh, no. Oppose.
Would you support the twenty-two forty-eighth Avenue project, which is also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
Support.
All right. The next is Paul, who's not here. So we'll go to Councilman Pram. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensaries?
Oppose.
Would you support or oppose mask mandate?
Oppose.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue Project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons project, the Nokia property project in its entirety?
It's the in-entire part, so oppose.
If Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
Oppose, as I voted before.
Would you support two forty-eighth Avenue project, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
It's the in- entirety part, so I I support the project, but not in its entirety.
All right. The next up is number five. That would be Vince. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of these dispensaries?
Support.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate in Naperville?
Support.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue Project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons Nokia project in its entirety?
Oppose.
If the Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
Oppose.
Would you support the two forty-eighth Avenue project, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
Support.
All right. Next, we would go to Mark. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of these dispensaries?
Support to the legal limit.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate here in Naperville?
Support.
Do you support Fifth Avenue Project in its entirety?
No, oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
If the Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
Oppose.
Would you support the two forty-eighth Avenue project, also known as Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
I support ICN, but I do not support this project that is currently proposed.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Next is Dr. White. Badrash, do you want to take on from Ben Yon?
Sure, I lost track of who who the questions went. So if you can let me know who the question needs.
I'll continue. I'll continue for the moment then.
Okay, good.
Okay, Dr. White. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensaries?
I agreed to three, so I would oppose additional ones.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate here in Naperville?
I would support.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue Project as is in its entirety?
Oppose because of the parking situation has changed.
Do you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
In its entirety, I'm kind of like John on that one. Yeah, yeah, I'll support.
If the Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
No, there needs to be some changes.
Would you support the two forty-eighth Avenue project, also known as Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
I would support it, but there the city needs to work on the traffic piece of it.
Then we will move to Jennifer. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing? Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensaries?
I'm sorry, I, can you repeat that? I had some distraction in the backyard, in the background there. I'm sorry.
Dead animals are more important.
There's a lot going on in the background here, so I'm sorry.
Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensaries?
Oppose.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate in Naperville?
Oppose.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
Right, so this hasn't gone through the proper process yet, going before council yet, so I'm going to pass.
If Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
It, I went before council already, so oppose.
Would you support the two forty eighth Avenue project, as is, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
Again, it's not gone through the proper process yet, going before council, and so I'm going to pass.
All right, we will then move to number eight to number nine, Vasavi. Okay, I need to mark it so that I don't skip over folks on that number nine. Vasavi, Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensary?
Pose.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate in Naperville?
I oppose.
Would you support the Fifth Avenue project as is in its entirety?
I oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
Again, I have to pass on that because this has not come to the city council yet.
Okay, I think support or oppose were the only two options, so pass.
Yeah.
I I know, I, you know, I didn't.
I oppose, yeah.
If the Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support or oppose that project?
Oppose.
Would you support the two forty eighth Avenue project, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
As is its entirety, I oppose.
All right, next is Jim. Naperville, okay, so the reason why I just gave two options of support or oppose and not, you know, pass or anything is because when you're at city council and this comes up, that's the only option you have. You cannot abstain from voting is what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong. So so that's why those are.
But the thing is, by the time you, when it gets to city council, though, it's gone through all the proper processes of of going through planning and zoning. And it also, at the time, is a public hearing for the residents and for the petitioner to show their sides at the city council meeting. So you're right, and once, but once you hear all the information at the planning and at the city council meeting, yes, you have to give a yes or no vote. But at this point, we haven't gotten all the information.
Well, here's the thing, this is, this is, these are the questions posed by residents, and this is your opinion. This is not, we are not talking about you are making a rule or law here, this, these are your opinions. So give your answer best to what you can, and if you don't want, that's up to you, but that's how these have been presented. Thank you.
All right, so Jim. Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensary?
Support.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate in Naperville?
Oppose.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Would you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
Support.
If Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
Oppose.
Would you support the two forty eighth Avenue project, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
Support.
All right, the next up is Allison. All right, Naperville has three recreational marijuana dispensaries. Would you support or oppose increasing the number of dispensary?
Support.
Would you support or oppose a mask mandate in Naperville?
Support.
Do you support the Fifth Avenue project as is in its entirety?
Oppose.
Do you support, would you support the Napier Commons project, also known as the Nokia property project, as is in its entirety?
I need to learn more, but right now I would oppose it.
If the Polo Fields project is re-initiated without any significant changes, would you support that project?
Oppose right now.
Would you support the two forty eighth Avenue project, also known as the Islamic Center of Naperville, as is in its entirety?
Support.
All right, and I think that is, I, did I cover, did I miss anybody? Nope, I think I got everybody. So those were, and we have just about five minutes from a closing perspective. So with that said, to be, just because we have two hours only, I think we covered a number of questions here. This brings us to the closing part of our, of our forums, or our candidate forum. So we would like to provide you guys with a minute each. That would be primarily for providing your closing statements. And we will start with Jennifer.
Okay, so I said it again, my name is Jennifer Roseanne Taylor. I'm running for Naperville City Council. I'm going to spend my closing addressing my position here about the mosque. So I have absolutely no issue with the mosque being bought, being built in South Naperville. And I recognize that what's being proposed at two forty eighth street is large. I've been closely following this project since the fall and attended all planning and zoning commission meetings on it. It's still in the planning zone commission phase, and they're still listening to resident feedback. What always bothered me when I went to speak out regarding development at council meetings is when it seemed like that people on council already made their decision. If council members and council candidates are going to predetermine their answer, then why are we going through the process of a public hearing of planning and zoning commission and having resident input at council meetings? I talk constitutional law, so I respect the role of government and the process set up and what people have died to protect. So to sit here and say how we'll vote on any issue before the facts and information known to present in council is completely improper and a violation of public trust in my view here. So that is why I'm passing on those two, and with.
All right, next is Mark.
I want to thank ICO and all my fellow candidates. It really has been a wonderful experience getting to know you, and it's been very educational in many ways. Local elections are the most important elections. The thing that needs to be done is to participate and get informed of the candidates. And all those who are listening today have done the first two. Now, all that's left left to do is go out and vote. So early voting, as you know, starts on Monday, so you can get out there and vote. What I'm asking, if you agree with my vision for for balanced development, for attaining affordable housing, for continuing our efforts in diversity and expanding transparency, then I'm asking that you vote for me, Mark, or on number ten on the ballot, right above Benny White. Thank you.
All right, next is Benny White.
Thank you for the question. During the summertime, I had the opportunity to walk and talk to many of the peaceful protesters and just to hear what their concerns were. And the question was often asked, what can I do to help create change in our community? And I often would tell them, you are the most powerful person in our community because you have the right to vote. So that's what I would tell you right now, everyone, you are the most powerful person, and I would appreciate your support. I would advise everyone to do your homework, look at our websites, listen to us, hopefully what you learned some stuff to today, and make your decision based on that. I'm, you know, I, you know, it was said, you know, sometimes we go in there, like our minds are made up. I actually try to listen to people and come up with a good decision based on what I'm hearing. But with that said, I am the last one on the ballot, like Mark said, and BennyWhite.org, that's my website. Look me up if you want to learn about.
All right, next is Ian.
When I became an officer in the Air Force, I took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. And as Vasavi mentioned, you're aware, in the Indian community, India is the largest democracy in the world, proud to be part of the oldest democracy in the modern world here. And there is no greater privilege that we all enjoy as citizens than the privilege of voting, and especially voting in local elections. If we want experienced economic leadership for our community, that's on the ballot. If you want leadership that's focused on decreasing the tax burden and making sure that two oh three and two oh four have equitable treated treatment in our community, that's on the ballot. And if we want leadership that values inclusion of diverse communities, that's on the ballot this time around. I'm asking for your vote on April sixth, and I am so grateful that I had the opportunity to speak before you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Vasavi.
I want everyone to know. I stand for unity, I stand for equality, I stand for inclusiveness, and I stand for our youth and our seniors' welfare. I have twenty plus years of experience working for Fortune 500 companies, IBM, Ge-tronics, and Siemens, with my expertise in cutting, cutting wastage through business processes, improve improvements which saved hundreds of millions of dollars for the organizations. This is, this is a transparency I will bring to the council if I get elected. I have endorsements from Naperville area Chamber of Commerce, fraternity of police, Daily Herald, and many more. And I have a deep understanding of the challenges our county is facing as part of post-COVID recovery, and I have the solutions to address these issues. I feel I confidently, I I can tell you, I'm most qualified candidate on this ballot. So please go and check for Chaka, vote for me. I am on this, on April sixth before, hour before, I am number three on the ballot.
Okay, Vasavi, your time's up. Apparently, a timer stopped working, so I had to go to a backup timer. Could you check if the timer is timed out, or did the webinar?
Because some issue with the timer, so just a few minutes, so that's okay, we can do manually.
All right, I will do that manually then. So Vasavi, the next up is Allison.
So what can you expect from me as a councilwoman? I've been to every council meeting since 2019 and have been providing summaries to my neighbors via Facebook. I am already a voice for residents who don't have time to sit through long city council meetings. I've been in the corporate world for twenty nine years. I'm used to delivering to clients, much like the city of Naperville strives to deliver for us. And that career has given me the global experience and leadership that would be a benefit to council. I'm tireless and dedicated. I mentioned I'm a runner. I'm on day six hundred and eighty of a consecutive running streak and will apply that same tenacity to council. I don't pretend to know the answer to everything, but I do my homework. I am a team player, and I will apply that twenty nine years of analytical experience to find solutions. I'm not going to play on your fears. I will always listen to all sides. That doesn't mean I'll always vote in the way that people would like, but you'll always have a seat at the table to convince me. I am truly running for Naperville. So remember, Allison Longabaugh on the ballot, and I'm on all social media at AllisonForNaperville. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next is John Crumman.
Thank you.
You're muted.
You're muted. Hi, I'm muted. I apologize. Hi, I'm John Crumman, and I'm the guy with the red K that's that's been over my left shoulder. Some of the troubles with the questions that were just asked, the rapid fires, because they were digital questions, and I'm not a digital guy. There's always some gray for us to find. And as a candidate, you talk a lot. But to be a successful councilman, and I believe I've been a successful councilman for six years, you have to listen. You have to listen to all sides and you, and I liken it to ropes. You have to get enough slack to tie them together. You got to give to get. And if you talk to your neighbors on to on the polo clubs, if you talk to your neighbors on little, little friends or any topic, any neighbor that's interacted with me, and there's been plenty, you'll find that they'll say one thing. I listen, and I listen for a more community-focused Naperville. And the more we listen and the more we we come together, the better it'll be. Again, I'm John Crumman. It's CrummanForCouncil.com. If you remember that red K, I'm halfway home. Thank you.
All right, next is Lucy.
Thank you. So my final minute, everybody, you get what you vote for. I hope everyone learned a lot about us candidates today, and I hope you research more about your candidates. I'm on LinkedIn, I'm on Facebook, my website is LucyForNaperville.com. I hope, I'm glad that everybody who attended is a conscientious voter. You're you're taking the time to learn more about us. So if you like my positions, tell your friends. If you don't, then just be quiet. But it was a great day. I look forward to election day. And, oh, so my all, my only big endorsement was from the Daily Herald. But go ahead and, you know, see what they have to say about me. And remember, I love Lucy, and everybody go vote. Thank you.
All right, next is Vince.
Yeah, I'm, I have two main issues that that I'm running on. Inclusion of the residents in the community to participate in the council and the planning and zoning. I don't believe that the present structure offers as much opportunity as we can provide. And the other question I have for the Naperville Development Partnership is why can't we get more public information without going through the Freedom of Information Act? So those are the two things that I would push for so that we have more transparency and more community involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And last but not least is Jim.
Well, thank, I want to thank the Indian Community Outreach for inviting us here tonight to speak to you. My name is Jim Hazelhurst. I'm your fourth choice on the ballot. I'm going to take this minute to amplify a couple of my statements, positions. Fifth Avenue, my concern there is that there's not enough in it for the community. There needs to be more, that, we own that property. There needs to be more community admitted amenities in there. And I'm also concerned about the possibility of tip funding. I don't, I don't appreciate tip funding. I think we don't, we shouldn't have that in our community. On Polo Fields, there's a traffic issue down there, and until that traffic issue is resolved, we should not be doing anything down there till we fix the traffic issue. And talking about traffic, that brings us to the ICN. A lot of people, their biggest concern is traffic on that street. First off, that street is going to be improved to make it better, able to handle that traffic. Secondly, I see Naperville MPD cars outside of Christian churches at the end of masses directing traffic to keep it safe. Why isn't that a valid option for our Islamic community? We can certainly provide them the same services and make sure it's safe down there as we do our Christian community. So therefore, that traffic argument, I have a problem with people claiming that's a safety issue when we obviously have handled it with our Christian community. We can certainly.
All right, with that, Krishna, I hand it back to you. You're muted.
So thank you, thank you so much, our candidates for coming out, spending your valuable time. I know there is a lot to be done. First of all, let me, I mean, we went a few minutes over. Sorry about that. We apologize for that. Hopefully, you, we provided enough value. This forum was about discussing all kind of topics. These questions were gathered from various residents. We did cut them short, I mean, we had, we had many, many more questions, but we were able to at least consolidate and get a few of them through. And I hope this will provide our residents a lot of material to go and look at. And they will also look at your websites now and everything else and come out to what my appeal to all residents who are watching and who will be watching, as we will be making these videos available on our website and social media. They 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 will find these useful, and but main thing is they will come out and vote. That's something we are driving. That's one of the missions of ICO, to get people to come out and vote. Unless they participate, we cannot expect anything to be fixed here. So thank you again. This was great. And again, the buzzer timers were the highlights of this. I believe you will remember those. They were different than anything else. They were too loud. I mean, I do understand, but somehow we had no control over those. And lastly, last not the least, Viral and Badresh, thank you for moderating. This was a great forum, and I hope to see you again soon. And all the candidates and whoever wins or loses, I mean, you all are winners, as I said. This is a big process. I have gone through this process a couple of times, and I know we all come out winners. We all learn a lot. We all come out, and we continue to fight and contribute. So irrespective who wins or lose, we we, we will like to see all of you to stay involved and continue this fight. So thank you again. Good luck, and we will see you soon.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.